Okay, let's call this meeting to order. And we do the roll call.
Sure. Jake Maring.
Here.
Uh, Casey Boor.
Here.
Mitch Swedberg.
Here.
Scott Meverden.
Here.
John Ortley.
Here.
Kevin Schmidt.
Here.
Wayne Schmidt will not be in attendance tonight, and we believe Alderman, Ashley, Gaffett may be late.
Okay, let's stand for the pleasurable agents.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is in compliance with the open meeting law. I would like approval of the agenda as submitted.
So moved, Madam Mayor. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the agenda is approved. I need approval of the meeting minutes of the March 4th and the March 19th in one motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, the minutes are... Okay, a public comment, is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward and address the council? Anyone from the public that would like to come forward?
I would, Madam Mayor. Casey Boor, 121 Vernon Street. Alright, so election is tomorrow, I will touch on that, but I think you're all aware. If you're in the 3rd district, remember you can vote for me twice. If you're anywhere else in the city, you can vote for me once. I would recommend voting for Casey as often as you can tomorrow. I appreciate the engagement this cycle has brought out. I had the opportunity to talk to a wide array of different people and perspectives through multiple mediums, online, in person, on the phone. It was having good conversations, and I'm grateful for everybody who reached out. I want to thank the businesses who allowed me the space and time to meet, to greet the public. Thank you Blue Yorkie, Yardstick Books, Kathy Tolazo, Antip Brewery, and Dairy Deans. My presence there isn't an endorsement of those places of me, as much as an understanding that public discourse is important. So, the last four years participating here, I've learned a lot of things, but one glaring truth persists, and that's without the volunteers working outside of the government, we don't have nice things here. Regardless of how tomorrow turns out, the best way to move forward for local communities, for them to thrive, will always be to have collective perspa- excuse me, collective participation. You all have talents and passions, you might be surprised with how much, with how minimal time spent, those talents and passions could be applied to the service of your community. I know I've been surprised by my own. So, I appreciate your time and your patience, and I appreciate you all. Get out and vote tomorrow, vote Casey. Thanks a lot.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward from the community and say something? Okay, one more chance, does anybody want to come forward and say anything under the public sector? Okay, well then we will move on to the consideration of bills, the conference attendants. Okay, did everybody get a chance to look at the bills, and are there any questions or comments on any of the bills? There are no questions or comments, then could I get a motion to approve the payment of the bills as submitted?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, would you do a roll call on that?
Meverden.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Boor.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Is there any conference attendants we need to approve?
Not at this time, Madam Mayor.
Committee reports, um, does anybody have any questions about any of the committee reports that were submitted? If not, could I get a motion to approve the committee reports as prepared?
Motion to approve.
A second, okay, and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the committee reports are approved. Next item is a liquor license application for Vander Ty Ventures LLC, this Steel Street 4.
Sure, so this was discussed at the PPP meeting, um, for Vander Ty Ventures LLC, doing business as the Steel 4. This formerly was Ruse, um, 322 Steel Street LLC. They surrendered their license, which makes this available for Vander Ty Ventures. Everything checked out. Um, Mariah had a good business plan when it came to what she planned to do with the stuff. She talked about that at the PPP meeting, so I don't see, um, any reason to deny this, but does anybody have any questions or anything like that?
Do you know when she's looking to open?
Um, within the next month.
Do we need a motion?
Yep, we would need a motion to approve it.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, would you do a roll call on that motion?
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Maring, and a second by Meverden.
Yes.
Okay, one second. Uh, Meverden.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Boor.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries, okay, any old business to come forward?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then, um, the next item is a resolution 1190-2024, World Migrating Bird Day. Would you like to read it, or?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, okay, so Resolution number 1190-2024 is a resolution setting April 27th, 2024, as World Migratory Bird Day in the city of Algoma. Whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our community, and whereas migratory birds help control insects, pests, and attract recreational dollars to our community, and whereas migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas, facing a growing number of threats on their migration routes and in both their summer and winter homes, and whereas public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conversation, conservation, and whereas citizens enthusiastic about birds, informed about the threats they face, and empowered to help address those threats, can directly contribute to maintaining healthy bird populations, and whereas since 1993, World Migratory Bird Day, formerly International Migratory Bird Day, has focused public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our community and throughout North America, and their wintering grounds to the south by encouraging planners to schedule a World Migratory Bird Day event during times when migratory birds are present. And whereas, World Migratory Bird Day is not only a day to foster appreciation for wild birds, and to have fun celebrating and supporting migratory bird conservation, but also a call to action. Now therefore be resolved, as Mayor of the city of Algoma, do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2024, as World Migratory Bird Day in the city of Algoma, and urges all citizens to celebrate this observance, and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large. So we would be looking for a motion to adopt this resolution, and then if it's okay with you, if Kathy Pabick could speak about the world, the celebration that they're hosting?
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
I'll make a formal motion to approve Resolution 1190-2024.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, it is approved. Okay, okay Kathy, you're on.
Kathy, would you mind coming up there, please, and doing it up there?
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was going to be given the opportunity to speak. As, as you just heard, World Migratory Bird Day in Algoma is April 27th from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. It's going to be held at the high school this year, which is a change of venue. It's organized by the Bird City Algoma Committee, and this event supports Algoma's ongoing recognition as a bird city, Wisconsin. The celebration is going to feature displays by local organizations, vendors, door prizes, and programs. Steel Belly BBQ is going to be there this year from 11:00 to 12:30 p.m. The programs include Birds and Bugs by award-winning nature photographer, our local talent, John Walsh, and he'll showcase the birds we can see in the area. Then Tracking Travel and Habitat is a panel discussion by the Walches who have traveled worldwide to do birding, and also Jacob Wolf from the Lake Michigan Bird Observatory will be here to talk about the modus receiver that was recently installed on the roof of the Algoma High School. Um, and then someone from the Lake Michigan Bird Observatory is going to talk about habitat improvement, and finally, live birds, we always feature live birds at our presentation. The Raptor Education Group, Inc. is going to be there with raptors you can meet up close and personal. So we hope that you'll all plan to attend and invite the rest of the community to do so. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you Kathy.
Okay, the next item, Tourism Promotion 2024 Budget and Room Tax.
So, this is the annual Tourism and Promotion Commission. Every year they submit this to the council. Casey, do you want to touch on any of it, or?
Sure, I mean, the budget is pretty much, it's kind of a standard thing. A lot of the things are repeats that you've been seeing year over year. There are a couple, notably under the Chamber Fulfillment, there's SEO and Facebook. Those are both items that we're going to be working with Discover Green Bay, where they have, they have data capabilities basically to, to focus on the particular events that would be particular here, to hopefully get, like when you, when you do a Google search on Algoma or on beaches nearby, Algoma comes up at like 16 or something like that, and part of that effort is to get better results. We saw it work, I believe the Roar on the Shore, excuse me, Sore on the Shore, they had done similar buys, ad buys, and had gotten tremendous results. So it's, it's all within the budget, it's just we're going to allocate some of the money towards more inter-net engagement, because I think we've been lacking on it. Uh, there was a lot of conversation about what our relationship with Discover Green Bay is, and I think part of it has been underutilized, and I think this year we're going to see some more tangible work from them and see kind of how that, that relationship can blossom. Uh, but as far as the budget, everything else is pretty much the same, or kind of status quo, you've seen it before. Do you want to touch on the room tax, or do you want to?
Yep, I can touch on that part of it. So, um, this comes up from the commission, it is their recommendation to leave the room tax currently where it is at, at 6%. So we'd be just looking for a, a motion to keep that currently, to go with their recommendation.
And the, one thing on top of that, there was a conversation during the last meeting about potentially raising it to 8%. Uh, the consensus of the committee was to, not, not so much table it, but to, to have it as a first item of order when, when they reconvene in October, to have, to kind of get an input from the city instead of just kind of going off it. So at the end of the letter, um, it said with the understanding that the commission will revisit the room tax in the fall and gather more accurate data from surrounding communities and local businesses. It's, it's taking a slow, measured approach, because every, every community to our north, I mean minus Forestville is at 8%. And I, I think that there's, there's probably some justification for, for considering that, but I, I, the way that they're, the way that the commission decided to approach it, I think is a sensible one, to make sure that we don't, we don't go willy-nilly into something, uh, we make sure we have all our ducks in the row.
Are the bill books going to be on the right side of the freeway?
Are you the correct side or the right side?
The correct side of the freeway.
I, I believe so, I, we'll have to follow up on that. If you could do that for me, Jay. Thank you.
That's not a problem. So what we're looking for, for, from the council tonight is then to accept their budget. Everybody I think has their budget, um, in front of them, and to keep the current room tax, or to go with their recommendation to keep it at the 6%.
Just, just a quick question, and I, I read the letter of a recommendation to keep it as is, and, and it is mentioned in there that the, um, how much it's grown year over year, as far as the dollars that this is producing? Do we have, I mean, can, can we make it a point when, it'd be interesting to see that, like what, what the five, 10-year, how that has grown.
To say 2020 to date, to just see the trend?
To see what the trend is, I mean, it'd be interesting, um, as a supporting document per se. I'll go ahead and make a motion to keep it as is at, at 6% of the rate, and then also approve the budget.
I'll second.
Okay, Aaron, would you do a roll call on that?
Yep, uh, so we have a motion by Meverden, and a second by Maring, to, um, keep the room tax rate at 6% and accept receipt of the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Ortley.
Yes.
Boor.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes, the next item is under CDC, the Ice Age Community Trail.
Yes, so this was discussed at Finance and Personnel, um, to look at the MOU and the city pitching in half of what it, um, the cost is to put this Ice Age Trail through the city of Algoma. Casey talked to it a little bit, I talked to a little bit about it. Amy Lord, um, with Ice Age Trail, and along with John Pabick, I don't want to take a whole bunch of their wind up, but they brought a couple of supporters along, um, to discuss or answer any questions. With that being said, um, I'm going to turn it over to John, and if anybody has any questions, like I said, Amy Lord, uh, from the Trail Alliance is, we can't see her right now, but she is on Zoom, she can hear everybody. She can see everybody, but she just can't, uh, we can't see her, so. And also Chad from IATA is, is on with us as well, so. John, would, would Aaron like me over there, or should I?
Yes, please, with a mic.
I was afraid you were going to say that. Thank you.
Or if you want to just grab that microphone and bring it back to you.
Just so I can see the rest of the crowd.
Good evening, I'm John Pabick, I live at 305 Fremont Street, in Algoma, Wisconsin. I am, was also appointed the Chair for the Ice Age Trail Community Ad-Hoc Committee by the CDC, and I'd like to recognize some of the members who are part of that ad hoc committee. Um, Mark Schuster, from Bayshore Outfitters. Debbie Kiderowski, from CTI. Who else is over there? There was also Abigail Robinson, representing the school district. Uh, Dr. Susan Gores, I'm coming to you, with Lake Shore Vision. And in addition to myself, rarely do you get just the one of us. My, my wife Kathy was also on that, on that committee by request, so. Those are the folks who took the bull by the horns, dug in deep to get, to, to put together an application to become an Ice Age Trail community. We had, felt that they had to get it done in a fairly quick order if we were going to be successful in our endeavors. Uh, I also wanted to recognize on the, on the Zoom, uh, the Manager of Outreach and Education, Amy Lord, as well as the Director of Trail Operations, Chad Duchateau. There are questions that came up in the Finance and Personnel Committee that were a little surprising. We formed as a committee, uh, right around November. The, Amy had come out to give a presentation to us in September. We formed as a committee, uh, after we had formed as a committee and were working on it, December 7th, the, the National Park Service made their announcement, and on December 14th, there was a explanation of that on the Ice Age Trail website. And what they stated is that, um, on December 7th, the National Park Service Director Chuck Samms made an exciting announcement. The Ice Age Trail, North Country, and New England National Scenic Trails are all now official units of the National Park Service. Although part of the National Park Service since 1980, the designation change means the Ice Age Trail is now equal in status to National Park units, and the other scenic trails, Appalachian Trail, Potomac Heritage, Natchez Trace, administered by the National Park Service. As a result, the Ice Age Trail will have the additional opportunities for federal funding through the Park Service, as well as more recognition and public awareness at a national level. It then went on to, what does unit status mean for all of us? When you got down to ownership of property, essentially, they were saying that there's little to no change, and that ownership of property the trail runs through will not change. This means private landowners, loners, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, Ice Age Trail Alliance, National Park Service, counties, cities, villages, school districts, et cetera, will continue to own the property and host the trail. So it doesn't simply revert to the federal government. All of you should be aware of that. Also, the trails themselves are jointly managed by the Park Service, Wisconsin Nat- Department of Natural Resources, and the Ice Age Trail Alliance, as it has been since 1980. So there's really no change in the status. It's not suddenly going to be, here are all the federal restrictions on what you can and can't do with your property. You'll be expected to maintain it as you have in the past. So that's no change. We did check with the Sturgeon Bay folks, and, you know, their, what they did with their MOU is they took out some of the, um, language, or some of the shells, because shells are contract language, and this is a memorandum of understanding, which is non-binding. I'll repeat that. Memorandums of understanding are non-binding. It's, it's essentially a first level of coming to an understanding in order to come to an agreement later on. So when Jake asked, does that mean that they won't come back later? They might. If we have to acquire land in Algoma, that might happen, but that's up to Chad to work through with the city, as well as the rest of us. Anyone on the committee have anything to add, um, to, to what I just said?
Do you have the letter I gave you from Josh?
I, I don't, it's back on the desk there. We have a letter here from Joshua Van Leishout, uh, the Administrator for the City of Sturgeon Bay. Uh, it was to Mark, he said, Mark, it was a pleasure speaking to you today about the city of Sturgeon Bay's 2021 designation as an Ice Age Trail community. The city was designated an Ice Age Trail community in 2021 with destination Sturgeon Bay, having easily fulfilled the commitments required in the revised MOU between the city and the Inter-Ice Age Trail Alliance. The ongoing effort of the city to be an Ice Age Trail community is minimal. As most activities are done through destination Sturgeon Bay in conjunction with the Ice Age Trail Alliance, at most I review meeting agendas of the Ice Age Trail Alliance, and is there, and if there is something that I feel may be of use to the city, I participate in a virtual meeting. The amount of ongoing effort is about the same as maintaining the tree city, bird city, and bike-friendly status. The designation of an Ice Age Trail community has been, has only been positive, providing visitors and residents with a feeling of something more substantial than being just in a town on a trail. Having a section of the Ice Age Trail, a, a facility, I'm getting lost here. A facility administered by the National Park Service brings much exposure to Sturgeon Bay on the, both national tourism and international tourism stages. The $2,500 investment in the program is worthwhile for the return on exposure and formal affiliation with the National Park Service and Ice Age Trail. I understand you are working with the city of Algoma on securing Ice Age Trails, uh, Trails, uh, community status. Feel free to share this email and pass along my, my contact information if there are any questions. So if any of you have any questions about the Sturgeon Bay experience, I have this available for you to follow up on. With that, I think what I'd like to do is turn it over to Amy Lord, who's on the, who's been waiting to say something, I'm sure.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
I'm going to be honest, Chad and I lost some, or most of that, um, report, so it's sorry, John. But, um, we are excited to, uh, have the opportunity to work with the city of Algoma for our Ice Age Trail community program and partnership. Um, I'll just say it really is a partnership. We, we here at the Alliance are, you know, working to promote, to protect, um, to build and maintain the Ice Age National Scenic Trail. Um, we have so many partners, um, all across the state, and so it's just, it's a great opportunity to share resources, um, promoting, you know, promote the city of Algoma as a hiker destination, um, but also work with Algoma residents to make sure they're, um, you know, utilizing and, um, taking care of the trail and using it as a resource to have, you know, um, wellness and emotional wellbeing, because it's a great resource, and it's, it's right there, um, in Algoma, so we're excited for this opportunity. Um, I apologize, John, I didn't hear everything you said, so if people have specific questions, um, I guess please ask, and either myself and/or my colleague Chad can, can answer them.
I just had a quick question, and, um, regarding the, the change, changes to the verbiage on the MOU that we've got here today, Matt? And I don't know who I should actually be asking this question, but were these changes made specifically because of conversations that were had with Sturgeon Bay, or how, how did these happen?
The, the red line changes that everybody has hand-delivered in front of them today, tonight, that is kind of a cookie cutter of what Sturgeon Bay did.
Okay.
Um, so that's where they come from.
So, so I guess the, the follow-up to that would be, um, and as it's videoed and YouTube'd and, and on a channel, yes, I voted no, and, and the reason had absolutely nothing to do with not supporting the Ice Age Trail. It was more, it just, on the verbiage of the, uh, the shells and sounding contractual, I understand that MOUs are not binding contracts, but, um, I, I, I can't speak for everybody that's on the council, but I support the initiative 120%. It was all about the, um, verbiage that was on the original MOU. So kudos to, to you, to, to Amy, to the team, John, thank you. Um, reading through these and the adjustments that have been made, um, I'm happy with the changes that were made, and, and now that they, it's being presented this way, um, I have, I don't have any, uh, any issues with the way that it's worded, and I, I support it 100%. I don't know if anybody else on the council would like to relay their thoughts?
Those changes were done in coordination with what we received from Sturgeon Bay, as well as, uh, the discussions I had with Amy Lord.
Yeah, so thank, thank you, I appreciate the efforts and the extra efforts that went into making these changes, so. Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Amy.
Matt?
Thank you, yeah, thank you guys for working through it.
I'd just like to add, uh, as well, this morning I received a call from Marty Olanichek, uh, a resident here in the city of Algoma. He was not able to attend the meeting tonight, but, uh, he is a city planner with Sturgeon Bay, and Marty echoed a lot what Josh Van Leishout had to say, that it's been nothing but positive for the city of Sturgeon Bay, um, having the trail system come right through the city of Sturgeon Bay. So Marty said unfortunately he will not be here tonight, but he wanted to let the council know that it is a positive thing, um, for the city of Algoma to have this trail system in the city, so.
That being said, are we looking for an action to move forward with the MOU, or more discussion?
One, because there's a different, new, the redlined MOU in front of you, so, um, if you're looking to... So if you're looking to adopt this MOU memorandum of understanding, the red line, we would look for that. And then also to approve the $1,250, which would be the half of that the city's contribution. The other half would be coming from Tourism and Promotion to get to that $2,500. So if that's.
And was there also the changing of the route, like straight through?
When, when we're cutting through from Sunset to Evergreen.
Hold, hold that for just a moment. Once we have the memorandum of understanding.
That comes after.
In the application, probably May is when Chad will be out here to discuss the pathway through the city, what we're, what we would like to see, what they would like to do. Chad, do you want to comment a little bit on developing or blazing a trail through a community and what's that, what that entails?
Yeah, sure, John. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Chad Duchateau, Director of Trail Operations. Just really excited to hear what the volunteers have done, what the volunteers have done to kind of push this through. But yes, from a, from a trail route standpoint, we're certainly, you know, we've moved, we've moved the route kind of listening to the local people on, you know, preferences and whatnot. But yes, it's totally up to the, you know, the locals as far as how we do this. But certainly, you know, you want to sort of take advantage of businesses. And, you know, in this case, I think there's a nice long boardwalk along the beach there that is a nice attractive, attraction for hikers. But yeah, the route is, is typically just blazed with these metal signage brackets that we put on street signs and, you know, other, other infrastructure along the trail. And it's just easier for people to see while hiking and then sort of pinpoints the trail from, you know, from a visual standpoint. But it's something that we would, you know, provide to our volunteers who help us build and maintain a trail so we can, you know, sort of show different examples of this signage that we've used in other, 20 of our other trail communities across the state. But, but yeah, the road is definitely something that isn't, you know, we don't, we, we work with you all to, to make it, you know, advantageous to the community and the hikers, right? Focus on interesting buildings or, like you said, businesses and also sort of some of the natural features, you know, already existing trail infrastructure within the city is, is, is key as well.
So just to simplify that.
I think it's great. I know, I know you already have your cruise ships parking.
Continue, Chad.
We lost Chad. I don't know what he was going to say. We'll see if he comes back.
We'll end it with cruise ships.
That's all you need to know, you guys.
He's going on cruises.
Well, and just, I mean, what I was asking is it does not need to be, the movement does not need to be part of it.
Correct.
Okay. I'll make a formal motion to move forward with the amended Trail Community MOU as presented and also the $1,250, approve the $1,250.
Who has the second? Jake?
Would you do a roll call, please?
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Swedberg?
Yes.
Fuhr?
Yes.
Ortlieb?
Enthusiastically, yes.
And again, thank you guys for putting in the effort and making the changes.
I would like to provide a, a hearty thanks to the ad hoc committee. I could not have asked for a better, more professional group to work with. They were, they were lightning quick and very accurate on all the stuff that they came back with. So it was very, very much a pleasure to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Amy.
Okay, then to Administrator's report.
Yes, a couple of things. 2024 Street Utility Project is underway. They moved in equipment last Monday, started working on Wednesday. Continue work this week. We'll see what Mother Nature brings us. Might be a hiccup here. But weather permitting, they will continue to work on Division Street. When they get down Division Street and their tie-ins are done at Fremont Street, they will then move up to Frank Street and continue work on Frank Street. When Frank Street's infrastructure is all rebuilt, all the new piping is in the ground. At that point, then concrete crews will start to move into town and start to build the road for final surfacing. Projection, everything goes well, Mother Nature cooperates. End of July, we will be done and blacktopped. It could be earlier than that, but we're shooting for the end of July to be up and blacktop roads back open, back to normal with that. So if everybody hasn't noticed or whoever has not noticed, the dredging has now been complete. It has all been cleaned up. The Public Works guys are continuing to, or got started a couple of weeks ago with putting docks in, continuing to put docks in. I think every time Casey sends a couple of guys down there, Mother Nature throws a curve ball at him. So we pull the guys back out of there and let it's, let them do its thing. But the dredging is complete. We are waiting for finals from our construction down there for final bill. And then it'll probably be on the other end of the project of the dredging where the spoils are all dumped. We will let that dry down. That will probably be like a June, July before that gets its cap on it. And that side of the project is totally complete. But as far as down in the marina, all the spoils are out and we're moving forward to getting the marina open. So that's the two things that I had. A couple of last meetings. I would like to thank Alderman Jake Mary. Jake's last full council meeting is tonight. Jake has been on the city council for four terms of total of eight years. So I would like to personally say thank you, Jake, for everything you've done with the City of Elgoma. And we'll, we'll miss you around here a little bit. Probably have to pick up eating some candy that you'd come in before a meeting and take. So I don't know who are going to have to take care of that.
You just did a reduction on a pesky question.
And also Madam Mayor Virginia Hasky. The mayor has been her third term and her second, second year here. This is her last full council meeting tonight. And tomorrow night, I guess we'll see who gets the throne after that. So thank you to both of them and a round of applause for the time they've spent here with the city. That's enough of listening to boring me. And the election details are coming next. Aaron, go ahead.
As you know, tomorrow is the election. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Please remember to have a valid photo ID with you when coming to vote. Curbside voting will be available to those who need it. I just asked that you go behind the, the parking lot here and not out in front on Fremont Street. We go to the back by the library parking lot. You'll see a sign up with a phone number for you to call. Absentee ballots can be returned until 8:00 tomorrow night. They cannot be placed in a drop box. They have to be turned in in person. And then the results will be posted on the city website, the city Facebook. And then I'll try and have them on the entrance to City Hall for anybody who's curious. It'll probably take until 8:30, 9:00 to get the results, the, the tape prints. And it takes a very long time. So that's all I got. Come on out and vote.
Okay, Mayor's comment. I do want to thank everybody for the two years that I had. I think we got a lot accomplished. And even though I'm not going to be mayor, I'm going to come forward and say, you're not, I'm not out of the picture yet because I'm still going to be actively involved in things and put my two cents worth in. And I am running for county board supervisor that represents Elgoma. So a lot of times there are things they do down there that I need to come back here and say, hey, we need to deal with it here. So, so you're not out of, out of me yet. I will be back helping, but I do appreciate the support that I have had in the past years. Okay, and then. Thank you. Then the agenda items for the next meeting, if you could get those to Matt or Aaron. Our next meeting will be May 6th at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. If there's nothing else to come, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.